For Tuesday, February 5th, 2019 at 6:03 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Pigley, Wickley, and Milton City Hall.
Item number two. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Item number three. Pledge of allegiance. Can you please all join us in stating and saying the pledge of allegiance? We have two individuals signed up to speak for our next public comments regarding items. We have Dave Lauter.
Dave Lauter, 2299 Milton. I'm here to protest the decision that the council made not to have a primary election, and more importantly, the role the mayor played in the meeting. First, the cost was addressed. There was $10,000. Linda Clark especially complained about the cost, but yet she spent more than that on a personal vendetta. The taxpayers' money. There's $10,000 in the budget for election expenses. There are no fall elections this year that I'm aware of. So the money was in the budget, or at least eighty or ninety percent of it. There was no reason that money could not have been spent to have an election and make sure we have majority rule rather than plurality rule. More important is the fact the mayor, whose political future will be decided by this election, chaired the meeting. This is a serious breach of ethics whether or not she made any comments. I'm astounded not one person in the room thought about this. People will probably either vote for the incumbent or against her. The council has managed to split the opposition vote, and we'll probably have a mayor with less than fifty percent of the vote. Now, in my mind, the mayor is aware of this. For all of her faults, I give her credit for being sneaky, self-centered, and egotistical. These traits will suit her well in a political career after she has done using the mayor's position as a stepping stone. I have contacted several governmental boards and organizations and several NGOs. The Freedom of Information Council agrees with me. The state ethics board sees it as a good area that is not well-defined. I'm sure the city attorney will agree with me that not every situation in life is clearly defined by every law that was ever made. I'll be gone at the time of next meeting. I'm still waiting to hear from some contacts. After that, I will decide if I want to bring formal charges. If you'd be interested in bringing the charges closer to the election. I have a quote from Bill Largers from the Freedom of Information Council. Interesting letter. Of course, I agree there is a conflict of interest about the mayor's participation. You could always say that's not really their field amongst the freedom of information and ethics. I have a quote from the Ethics Board in the state. If a matter in which a local public official should not participate comes before the body, the officials shall leave their portion of the body's meeting involving discussions, deliberations, or votes related to that matter and ask the body's minutes to reflect their absence. The body's remaining members may review the matter and take whatever action they find appropriate. Local public officials are encouraged to consult with their body's legal counsel if they have any concerns regarding potential conflict of interest actions. I can request and advise your opinion from the Ethics Commission regarding the application of the Court of Ethics's particular situation. It also says, "If I believe Mayor Welch has violated the Court of Ethics, I can file sworn nullifies complaint to your office." Now, I'm going to be on vacation for a couple of weeks. I'm going to see what personnel contacts say, but I don't think you've seen me under me. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation in the city council.
Hello. I would like to talk about agenda number eight. The recurring $5,000 tourism deal with the school district.
Are there other? Is it just with the school district, or are there other partnerships involved? Is that what your understanding is?
Well, my understanding, I've seen the contract that's coming forward tonight, but the school portion I have more of a problem with.
Okay. So you'd, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't misrepresenting that it's a partnership just with the school district, because you're just talking about being opposed to the partnership with the school district and not the other partner.
Right.
Okay, all right.
I haven't been able to talk about this subject at the Milton School Board meetings because it was on the gen, because it must be on the agenda before I can do so. It has never been on any school board meeting agenda. With regard to the school's participation in this marketing and tourism partnership with the city of Milton, I believe there should be first be discussion on how to protect accountability and transparency to the taxpayers. Will there be elected officials at public meetings? If so, will there be agendas and minutes taken? Or will this just be a public-private partnership where they take public money and conduct business in a private manner? Being that our tax dollars are earmarked for public schools, I fail to see how marketing tourism can be considered an instructional purpose for our kids. It is not the responsibility of, nor is it proper for the school district to fund a business agenda when they continue to go to the public for more money claiming a lack of funding. I believe the city should question who their partners are, how they source the money, and if it was done in a manner respectful of the taxpayers. I think other sources once tied to economic growth should be tapped for money long before it is re-gifted from a school district described as poor and heavily funded by the government. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Item number five. Approval of common council meeting minutes from January 15th of 2019. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second them.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment or corrections? All those in favor? All those opposed? The minutes have been approved. As you all know, February is Black History Month, and we have a rich history in the city of Milton with our fond founder being an abolitionist and assisting our African-American brothers and sisters when they were fighting for their freedom. And I am very proud to read this proclamation for Black History Month, February 2019. Whereas, the month of February is observed nationally as Black History Month to show the accomplishments African-Americans have made and continue to offer to this nation. And whereas, Black History Month acknowledges and honors numerous past and present educators, scientists, activists, pioneers, leaders, artists, inventors, entrepreneurs, and elders. And whereas, the theme of Black History Month for 2019 is black migrations. And whereas, the story of Milton since its foundation has included progressive abolitionist views and actions that led to the Milton House, a former stagecoach inn built in 1844 by Milton's founder, being named a national historic landmark. Recognized on the National Network to Freedom and documented as the only authenticated underground railroad site in Wisconsin people are able to tour. And whereas, Amanda Johnson Lee, a self-emancipated slave, worked in a Union Army encampment in Corinth, Mississippi as a cook and seamstress for the soldiers until a doctor from Edgerton, Wisconsin volunteered to conduct her with him to Wisconsin, and she lived in Milton with her second husband, A.B. Lee. And whereas, Phil Sheridan Jones, a self-emancipated slave from Virginia, worked for the Union Army at 11 years old, serving as a messenger for a Captain Jones before moving out west and eventually settling in Milton for two decades, where he operated at least two barber shops in Milton Junction. And whereas, Milton remembers and recognizes the contributions that these three individuals and countless other African-Americans have made and are making to the unique fabric that is the community of Milton. And whereas, the mayor and common council recognize the significance of Black History Month as an important time to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of African-Americans in the city of Milton and around the United States. Now therefore, I, Anisa M. Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, County of Rock, State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the city of Milton and encourage the celebration of this month to provide an opportunity for all residents in the city to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences that have shaped our community and nation. And I will sign this the fifth day of February 2019. All right. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lauter, for attending the meeting. We will be sharing with you our 2018 year in review. We have done many things in the city of Milton in 2018. We are proud to share this with you, and I want to thank all the city staff and our administrator, Al Hewlic, for putting this together. So, without further ado.
Okay. Thank you. As I said a couple of meetings ago, this generally is my favorite meeting of the year. Starting in, on my fifth year here at the city of Milton, I think it's safe to say that this has been the most successful year. 2018 is the most successful year that we've had since I've been here. And even in the years that weren't as successful, this is still always a great night, because it's an opportunity to kind of review everything that we did for a year. Three hundred and sixty-five days is a long time. And it's, it's easy to forget things that happened early on in the year and even things that happened later in the year. But every year, a lot of things happen, and in 2018, there was a lot of really good things that happened. So I always start these presentations off with just a couple of snippets of information that I find to be compelling. The city has seen over $44 million in new equalized value growth over the past two years. That has helped increase the city's overall value, reduce the tax rate, and provide countless opportunities for employment, economic activity, and investment in our community. And I'll break down some of that information further to kind of talk about how that all relates to the bigger picture. This next slide, I think, is probably one of the most compelling slides that we'll see, this one and the next one. The city's tax rate in 2018 decreased by six and a quarter percent, or 63 cents. That may not sound like a lot, but in tax rate terms, that is a huge decrease in the city's tax rate. This is the lowest tax rate the city of Milton has seen since 2014, and it's actually lower than it was as far back in 2011. This next line is a fact. It is, contrary to popular opinion in some circles of the community, this next line is a fact. The city of Milton is the lowest taxed city in Rock County. That is a fact. And the information that supports it is this next slide. This is a history of tax rates in the city, for all cities, in Rock County for the last 10 years. And you will see consistently, over the last 10 years, the city of Milton has been the lowest taxed city in Rock County. And 2018 is no different. At $23.34, we are the lowest taxed city in Rock County. Lower than Edgerton, Evansville, Janesville, Beloit, Broadhead. Lowest taxed city in Rock County. That's a fact. How did we get there? We did a lot of things in 2018. We did a lot of things in 2017, a lot of things in 2016, but this time, we're going to focus just on 2018. We're going to go through on department-by-department basis and talk about each kind of highlights in each department, so each, each one of the department heads who sit on the wings here can, can talk about their many accomplishments in 2018. And we started off in no particular order, probably because he's the first one who gave me his list, with the police department and Chief Markport. So feel free to read through the bullet points or just hit the highlights of the highlights. I hate reading off of PowerPoints. I'll just say that. My speech teacher would be appalled if I did that. I guess, I am again remarkably proud of the staff that I have. This is an opportunity for me to talk about all these accomplishments, but I didn't do these things by myself. And I have a great group of people who helped us do all of these things, spearheaded by our re-accreditation at the end of 2017 that we're then pushing forward for our first year in 2018 of our next re-accreditation, which is now only a short year and a half away. We've, we've taken all of that work that we were doing for accreditation, and we're now spreading it out to individual employees, so they are learning the process and creating, hopefully, a sustainability in the program over time. We hired people. We hired two new people last year for the patrol staff. We promoted, after Kevin Anderson retired, we promoted Kyle Johnson to a lieutenant position. We hired a couple of crossing guards and helped fill in some gaps there. So it was a busy hiring season, but then we got to full staff. And thankfully, my projections are we're going to remain there for a while. So we've done a lot of work with partners in the community, like our school district. I've talked about in these meetings before how, how we are working together as a county to more effectively manage large-scale critical incidents. And then, on a local level, we're doing work together with our own fire department. We're working with the school district on their emergency planning and trying to consolidate all of that into some single plans that will hopefully lead to less complication and less chaos if we were to be unfortunate to have one of those incidents here. Lots of community involvement. I need a new coffee with the chief's location, so I gotta figure that out yet. Last Wednesday.
And a new chief.
Yeah, and a new fire chief. Last Wednesday wasn't the same, and I let Rhonda Mitchell know that. I guess those are the, those are the big things. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty proud of the work we did.
Thank you. We're very proud of the work that you did, too.
In terms of some of the accomplishments the police department had, Wile E. Accreditation obviously was a, was a huge one, and that's a re-accreditation that involved, you know, countless hours and thanks to Ryan Justice and a lot of the other command staff to kind of put that together. But yeah, the police department continues to be, you know, one of, one of the many shining stars in Milton, and I receive many, many compliments in our community and outside our community, specifically about our chief. And I think they're well-deserved, so thank you. Next up, Wisconsin's Public Library of the Year.
Yep, so we won a little thing called the Wisconsin Public Library of the Year last year. Very exciting. A lot of that was in part because of the programming we do at the library. We had over 570 programs with 12,500 program participants just last year. Staff has been very, very busy with the programming. We have a great staff. Jamie, of course, with the children's programming. She's visiting the schools. We have over 100 school visits all last year, in part because of Jamie. We hired someone just for tween programming, so we're kind of concentrating on that nine to 12-year-old age. Pretty unique for libraries, I believe. We held our food truck rally. We have, next one's coming up on May 5th. Mark your calendars. But we have, we had two food truck rallies. We had our library lop, which raised money for the library. I want to, same thing that you said, we have a great staff. We're out in the community, we're making community connections. Very proud of our staff, what we've been doing for Milton.
And, you know, they are the library of the year, and I'm sure everybody in the room's been in the library facility, and that is one of the main reasons of it, but it's not the only reason. I believe that they're the library of the year because of the staff. And if you go in there during the day, I comment almost every time I'm in there, Ashley can vouch for this, that I'm jealous of them, because it always seems like they're having a great time and that they enjoy being there. Not that we don't have that at city hall, but not at the level that they do. And they're, they're just a tremendous group of people, and they're so dedicated and committed to the library, but not just the library as a brick-and-mortar facility. They're dedicated to the concept of learning and continuing education for all age groups, and it's, I think it just goes to show just in how they conduct themselves, and library of the year is, it probably should be like library of the decade.
And I wanted to make a comment how perfect that this fits in with Black History Month, because libraries are the great, a great place to feel included and welcome and a diverse population, and it builds community. It is one of our major assets that builds a strong community, and we would not be the city that we are without it. And it's not just about checking out books either. There's so many programs. People from all over Rock County come to our library, and they are so impressed, and we can be more proud. And, you know, city hall does not have all those cool things to do. Like, I mean, there's just, I don't know where else has it, so we're, we're so proud of you.
Just a couple of pictures for the library. Third annual library lop, children's programming. I had an opportunity to go to one of the children's programs when we were filming the "We Are Milton" promotion, and what a, so, it's so cool. I mean, I have two little boys at home. The youngest one's only seven months old, so I don't know how much he'd like it. He'd probably watch. And then the oldest one is three years old, and he would probably love it as long as he could stand way in the back of the room and watch everybody. But it was super fun to watch that, and again, just what a cool place to be and, and to, to get to work. Couple of pictures from the Wisconsin Library Association Public Library of the Year. You may recognize some of those folks on the left and, and on the right. If you don't recognize the person on the far right, that's Lisa Brooks, our former library director who retired in 2018, but now we have our new library director, Ashley, so kind of the passing of the torch there. So I think it was like on your first day you were given this award, right?
I was able to announce it.
Yeah. Yeah, not many first days like that. Yeah. So what are you going to do in 2019, I guess is the real question. Next up, Public Works Department. The ones that we see the most, yeah.
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 Well, I guess mostly for 2018, the, the best thing is just the city keeps growing, and we've still been able to do all the same services. And, you know, and it helps, too, that we got experienced staff. We finally have a full staff. There's been a full staff now for at least half, half a year or longer. We readjusted duties, you know, for water and treatment plant and public works, and part of that is, you know, we've got new regulations just from DNR, just the, you know, that we have to keep up with, and just, just the general modernization we've been able to keep up with. We still, you know, try to get all the services for people that we can. One nice thing is we do sometimes get some complaints, but that's not a normal thing. So it seems like a big deal when you get one, because we don't really get, I, overall, whole city, I don't think we get a lot. We get, you know, if you get a couple a week, it's like a big deal, which isn't very many. So, and besides that, with the tight budget, we've been able to do some street projects and keep up the infrastructure. Besides that, also, you know, some code things like, you know, trying, you know, with the Emerald Dash board trees, and the public's been really cooperative about that, you know, about doing some of those things. So, Community House, once in a while, we can do a thing that needs to be done that doesn't cost us extras. We got that done, and the people that used it noticed it right away. So that was, that was, you know, that was a good thing. And sometimes when you just have to add a little bit extra thing, like doing the holiday lights, just because you should just do it, because it's good for the city, so. But it helps to have experienced staff, and, you know, they're still proud of what they do all the time, so.
Yeah, that last comment, I think, is really telling of the department, in my opinion. There is, it is a very modest group. It really is. Starting right at the top with Howie. You know, they are a talented, dedicated group. They really do care. Oftentimes throughout the year up here at the council, we talk about opportunities to, that, that the public work staff came up with to save money, or to buy equipment for cheaper, or to repurpose equipment, and they're all in it together. And if you remember back in November, we were in a, we were in a tight spot with the budget. We really were. We were in a position where we were, we were going to have to make some very, very tough decisions, and we met with staff, and it was the Public Works Department that kind of answered that call and came up with some creative solutions in order to bridge that gap. And there were sacrifices that they were willing to make for the betterment, not only of the rest of the employees in the organization, but, you know, sacrifices they were willing to make for the, for the entire community. And they do, they continue to, a lot of times, do more with less in, in terms of the city keeps growing, but their workforce doesn't. In fact, they eliminated a position this year in order to make, to balance the budget. So as we continue to have more streets, more inlets, sewer inlets, you know, more parks to more mo, they continue to do that at an exceptional level. And, and I firmly believe it starts at the top with Howie and, and Donnie and Mike and, and Ron and Lon and Steve and some of those folks that are, that are really, really trying to make it all work. And I, they're just a great group, and they're super modest, except for Ron. They're all super modest.
They're also very responsive, and we don't get very many complaints at all. But every now and then, someone will say, "Hey, can you check this out?" Or "Why did this happen?" And they always get a personal response from our Public Works. And I really, really appreciate that and all that they do and how kind-hearted they are, and they really put the residents first. And I want everybody to know that, how dedicated they are and how much they have always done for our city and been so flexible and so willing.
And they have to tackle a lot. I mean, Howie mentioned a handful of those things in his presentation, but just some of the stuff that I want to highlight. Refurbishing the Community House. That was one of the goals that we set as a council and as a staff in early 2018. And it was a goal that, you know, we weren't necessarily sure exactly how we were accomplished, but again, talked to Howie. Howie has resourceful staff. They went in and personally refurbished the interior of the Community House. Refurbished the cabinets, refurbished the walls, refurbished the countertops. They did it all themselves and did it with an existing budget. There was no additional budget allocation in the 2018 budget to accomplish those improvements, because they're resourceful and they were able to do it. Some other projects, exterior of the Community House. They painted the outside of the Community House, and then we repaved the parking lot. We assisted in the, in the Milton House parking lot, actually in 2017, but they continued that project with the restoration of the exterior of that facility with the, with one of the facade grants. And it's how we talked about, there's so much more to Public Works than just plowing streets and, and painting cabinets. Code enforcement is a huge part of their, of their job. They're out in the community, and they see those, those things that are going on, and Howie works hard to keep on top of those things, and he gets assistance from the police department and Blaine Larson, and, and, you know, they work as a team that works well. Downtown parking improvements. We had a specific request from some specific businesses in the downtown, and we were able to accommodate that request. Howie, you know, met out on the street with those business owners and came to a solution that was well-received. He talked about the Christmas lights. We had a situation this year where everybody has kind of grown accustomed to seeing the Christmas lights in Goodrich Park and Railroad Park, but funding for that was generally done through private entities, and, and we weren't able to, to make that happen this year. Again, Howie and his crew step up and say, "You know what? We'll try it." And, you know, they did a great job, and they did it, again, with existing budget, existing resources, no new allocation. You know, the list just goes on and on. Public Works projects. Front Street Alley was resurfaced. Goodrich Parking Lot was resurfaced. Catman Street was resurfaced. Northside Drive, that was kind of the big one in this year, was resurfaced all the way from Sunset to Madison Avenue, right in front of the, the schools there. And Second Lane was resurfaced. And then we partnered with the school district to try to fix kind of their congestion issue that they had at Milton West, and were able to work with them to have that improvement done, not only to the Milton West Elementary School, but also, we believe, an improvement to Lamar Park and its pavilion, and the use of the pavilion by making that handicap accessible and allowing some off-street parking to exist in that area as well. And right now is a good time to talk about snowplowing, as it sleets out there right now and things are slippery. Snowplowing is always a challenge, and we jinxed it. I believe, Anisa and I jinxed it, probably about two weeks before the big snowfall, we, she'd mentioned, you know, "We bought that nice big snowplow in 2018, and we've hardly got a chance to use it." And then the next thing you know, it comes.
I created the polar vortex, too, just so you know.
But these two pictures, I think, are incredibly impressive to me, and I understand that their weather and traffic patterns play a role in how pavement integrity can, can exist after a snow event. But I took this picture, I was driving down the street on But I took this picture, I was driving down the street on January 23rd, so just a few weeks ago. And this is literally 30 minutes after the snow stopped falling and that's Madison Avenue. That's concrete almost from curb line to curb line. And yes, the temperature was warm and, and yes, there's a lot of cars that traffic on, on, on Madison Avenue. And I still love my friends in, in Janesville, but I tell you Milton Avenue didn't look like that. Madison Avenue looks like that because they timed their snow plowing. Howie watches it very diligently and Donnie watches it very diligently and they do it at the times that are most effective and they know that they can capitalize on the elements to have basically concrete from curb line to curb line. You can see, if you can get really close, there's a guy out snow blowing on the far right-hand side of that picture because that, it had just stopped snowing. I mean, that is impressive. And then the next picture on the right is a downtown snow removal that, that was taken at 5:30 a.m. on January 23rd. And you can see that there is basically no snow left in the street in front of those businesses. And that was right after a snowfall on January 23rd. I think we got nine inches on the 23rd and then another like four inches on the 24th. I can't remember. That, that seems like a lifetime ago. But, you know, those are just examples that, 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 you know, I wanted to share. Again, it's the modesty that, you know, Howie and those guys don't kind of, you know, go out and, and brag about it, but, but I can, I want to.
Danny, did you want to?
Am I allowed to say something? I just want to say being engaged with the business community a lot, I get so many complaints about the city and the employees about how you keep those streets clean and you have to say that for impact and they get to work. So I just want to thank you for that because, I mean, I know it's a hard job and it takes a lot of guys' effort, but most of the businesses, I mean, they've all complimented the job that we did, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, yeah. And, and there was a Facebook post, I think that Inga had put up about snow plowing. And generally when a snow event is done, we try to let the public know that sidewalks need to be, the snow stopped at this time, sidewalks need to be cleared by this day. And, and underneath it, there was 24 comments under that post and every single comment was positive. Every single one of them, all 24 of those comments on Facebook. I don't think there's ever been a comment, or a Facebook post ever that has had 24 comments and none of them were negative. And it doesn't matter what it is, like the Packers win the Super Bowl, somebody's going to hack him a negative comment underneath it. So that was, I mean, that is, is awesome and I, and I appreciate their work and I appreciate the community for, for, you know, kind of giving that feedback too. City Hall, these are some, this is kind of an amalgamation of Dan's work, of Inga's work and LeAnn's work and, and just a tiny bit of mine, but it's mainly them who, who make this all, all go. We had four elections in, in 2018. And if you remember, some of those were kind of big. And some of those were kind of contentious. But four elections and everything went smoothly, no errors, no issues. LeAnn does a fantastic job of organizing those activities, making sure that the lines and the queues are as short as they possibly can be, even in those November elections. It's, it's impressive to see how that works and we have awesome, awesome poll workers. Many of them have been with us for many, 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 many years and they are, they're dedicated and they have a good time when they're here and it, and it's just, it's kind of fun to come in here and work during those days. I don't know if I could do it all day, but, but, you know, LeAnn does it and it's, it's awesome. This year we held a alcohol license holder meeting, the police department and, and our city clerk did, to meet with all of the license holders to kind of talk about the process, what's working, what's not working, and then just reviewing general rules, rules and regulations, making sure everybody's kind of on the same page and everybody has the same level of expectations. And I think we used to do that back in the day, Inga, is that correct? But we hadn't done it in several years.
Yeah, probably since like 2014.
Yeah, so LeAnn wanted to kind of reinstitute that and Scott wanted to reinstitute that. So I, you know, that was a great opportunity. LeAnn partnered with the county to provide baseline chief inspector training for all newly appointed election officials. I have a feeling that elections are not going to get less contentious in the near future and, and certainly not going to be less busy. So that, that's always a great opportunity. We took over the fire department payroll on a bi-weekly basis. We used to do it on a monthly basis and now we do it on a bi-weekly basis. And that works very seamlessly from what I understand from LeAnn's perspective and Jenny saying yes. So you, you're continuing to get paid, so that's good. We were awarded the Tree City USA, which we have been for the past couple of years. And then this year, a new designation we received was the Ice Age Trail Community Designation, which was very cool. And they came and had an awesome presentation at our community recognition picnic and they continue to be very engaged with us. And that's, it's a great organization and we're proud to be a part of that. Inga, you know, really is the one who kind of organizes a lot of those activities and works with the Parks and Recreation Committee to do those things. Organized the Community Recognition Picnic, the Make a Difference Day, the Prairie Seed Collection and the Arbor Day Event. And I've talked about this a couple of times at, at some past meetings, but really expanded our social media presence and our social media mediums. Inga continues to be super creative in how she engages the public and gets people drawn to our Facebook page. It is, as frustrating as Facebook can be, it is, when used for good causes, can be a very powerful tool in disseminating information. We actually got an email from somebody a couple of days ago saying, hey, in the past you used to do a Facebook post about this, can you do that again? I mean, so people are even looking for certain things. And Inga gets, it's 100% of the credit for that. She is awesome at it and she continues to find innovative ways to do it and engaging ways to do it. And she's got even more ideas that if there was 29 hours in the day, we might be able to accomplish, but I'm sure she will find a way.
One of the things that I have found over the years with the city staff is they, they hardly ever say no to an idea or, or try something new. They're so open-minded, they so are dedicated to promoting the city. And there have been times when I've come in and I thought, you know, we've had a conversation, well, what do you think about this or how about this idea? And Inga and Al and the other staffs are like, yeah, we'll look into it. When we talked about, when we first looked into being an Ice Age Trail community and I looked at like what that involved, I felt a little bit overwhelmed about it. I thought, oh my God, this would be so cool. But Inga and Parks and Rec and Howie, I mean, they, they just, they just do it. They're, they're so willing to promote the city and the community picnic. I don't know of very many communities that have a potluck picnic for their entire community. That's like bring a dish to pass and our city will provide the meat and the condiments and the drinks. And we're always looking for new ways to strengthen our community and have our neighbors know who lives next door to them or who lives in the community. And they just, they just do a great job and we're on Twitter and Instagram. And we are really a very modern community and progressive. So I, I just can't say enough about it. And I know other people, especially with the Ice Age Trail community, they were just so impressed. They're like, wow, you got that, you guys got that done and you got it done so quick and it's such a wonderful partnership. So if you have ideas, please bring them to the city because we're always open-minded and willing to look at, at new ways to make our city a better place and have businesses and our residents have a great experience with our community.
Ditto. Yep, I agree. Just a couple of kind of interesting statistics, I just call them city statistics. This just kind of gives you just a general overview. A lot of this stuff is hard to understand in a silo or in, in, in a vacuum, but, you know, some of the numbers just kind of speak for themselves. City Hall, city staff, Dan, Inga, Rebecca processed 26 city payrolls, 26 gathering place payrolls and 25 fire department payrolls. I'm not sure why they got one less. Oh, was it the transition? All right. But, I mean, that's, it's, that's a lot of payrolls to process and we do it all right here. And we, you know, a lot of those things have changed over the years and two years ago, we, we have one less staff person in City Hall than we did two years ago. Processed 9,493 cash, check, credit card transactions at the mailbox window or dropbox. That means somebody physically came to City Hall. They may not have walked inside, but they physically came to City Hall to, and, and we processed those physically at City Hall. Processed 3,358 credit card transactions. DPW processed an additional 282 cash, credit, check, credit card transactions. The city issued 895 checks and processed, processed 571 credit card transactions, meaning we purchased 571 credit card transactions. And the fire department issued 511 checks. One of the cool things that I think Dan implemented a long time ago, I think it was Dan, if it's not Dan, you're going to get credit for it. Yeah, it was you, yes. Yeah, it was you. Take credit for it. Well, see modesty. Yeah. So when we switched over to credit cards that give cash back rewards and we try to process as many transactions as we can through, with credit cards, realizing that we're going to pay those off every month. So there's never any insurance settings occurred. And then we get that cash back. And all of that cash that we get back goes into the Parks Fund. So it's a way that we can supplement our Parks Fund and continue to improve our parks and, and Parks Equipment and Park Features and things of that. And it's just, it's a, it's an out of the box way of, of, you know, trying to get at one of those underfunded entities in the community that play a huge role. We mailed 14,400 utility bills. That just seems like a lot. Website traffic increased 6%. We introduced a new website to the community in 2017 and we've gotten a lot of great feedback on it. And we continue to try to, you know, keep that fresh and increase its functionality. And, and Facebook likes. Again, even though I'm 37, I think Facebook is weird. I don't really like it that much, but it's hugely important. It really is. And our likes increased from 1,665 on 1/118 to over 2,100 today. That's a huge increase in a short time. And that again is, is due very much in part to, in large part to Inga. And when people start to understand that they can go to our Facebook page to get relevant information that is important to them, sometimes maybe in their day-to-day lives in terms of snow plowing or, or when meetings occur or what's on the agendas or if we have a, you know, an unfortunate water main break or something, people know they can go to the Facebook page to see that and they tell their neighbors about it. If the traffic continues to increase and, and we're able to again, reach out to our community and, and talk to our community in a way that wasn't available to most places 10, 15 years ago.
Two other things I just thought of that we did not include on here that were pretty big deals. We had our first citywide evaluation and we don't know how long. And then we adopted a more comprehensive debt policy to hopefully drive us out of debt purgatory, as I like to call it.
Yes, debt has, continues to play a big role in our, in our financial outlook, but things are, are moving in all the right directions in that, in that regard. We'll talk a little bit about that later. Here's just some more information about the Facebook or about, about our website traffic. I know that is almost impossible to read, but the big takeaways is 47% of our site traffic comes from mobile devices, which is pretty interesting, meaning people are going on their smartphones to access our, our page. And we had over 77,000 people visit our website. Pretty amazing number of people come and, and visit our website. Here's just a couple of pictures from some of the things that we talked about. Our Ice Age Trail Community Designation at the Community Recognition Picnic, that was a super cool event. And once again, we had like just tremendous weather that day. One of these days we're not, but man, we're, we've been fortunate. We started the We Are Milton campaign with the Chamber, which was Danny's idea. And, you know, that kind of caught, caught fire and we, that sign was seen around town in a lot of events. That was actually the last time we saw that specific sign somehow, somehow missing at the Community Recognition Picnic, but we got a new one, thank you Mark Warren. But that was seen all around town and at various events and, and is starting to appear in some of the videos that, that we're doing. Economic development. This is, you know, kind of one of the things that gets all the headlines, but it again, it's, it's, it's all part of kind of what, what makes up some of those, those first two slides we saw. $44 million worth of new growth, 6% decrease in the tax rate. A lot of that is due to economic development. We saw over $18.7 million worth of new valuation growth, growth just in 2018. Over $6 million in private commercial and industrial development and investment. That's up $4 million from last year. So when you think about that, we've had $44 million worth of new growth over the last two years and we saw a $4 million increase just in 2018 in industrial and commercial growth. Over 120,000 square feet of new industrial space was constructed in 2018 and over 100 new jobs added in 2018. Those are, those are hard numbers to even comprehend for a community our size. Those are huge numbers for a community our size and it's, it's impressive. Over $3.9 million worth of residential construction. That's something that, you know, hasn't been seen in Milton in decades. 15 new housing starts, that's up $1.4 million from last year, from 2017. Again, all of those arrows are pointing up and that's, that's kind of what we continue to see. 33 new lots were planted and we're having another 11 coming real soon. And we had 15 new businesses start in Milton in 2018. 15 new businesses. Again, I mean, if I had to stop and try to think about where they all were, I don't even know if I could. And a few years ago, when I had the slide up there, you know, we all probably in the room, if we lived in Milton, probably could have named all three or four of them. Now, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's incredible. And it's, it's fun and it's, but it presents some challenges and we'll talk about some of those challenges. Just a couple of pictures of the development that occurred in 2018. There's Red Hawk Farms subdivision up on the old Pierce Farms. Mike Lucas's new apartment building that's fully constructed now and he started on his second one over there on Sunset. Here's the groundbreaking for SSI that took place on a very, very cold day, I think in March. It was pretty miserable, but that's the groundbreaking that took place in March of 2018. There's the fully constructed building in November of 2018. And next to it, Diamond Assets. Both of those buildings were completed in 2018. So we went from a groundbreaking in March to that building on the left in November. Diamond Assets finished up, I think in April of this year, March, April of this year. And those are actual pictures. Those are, I mean, they look like they're kind of artist renderings, but those are actual pictures. Another thing that Inga Kushman does for the city of Milton. Other just kind of snippets of information, I know we've talked about a couple of these already. Decreased the tax rate by 63 cents, lowest tax rate since 2014. Again, lowest taxed city in Rock County. We assisted with all city committees, tourism, historic preservation, parks and recreation, library board, CDA, police commission, public works. Board of review. Plan commission.
Joint Review Board.
Joint Review Board, yep. Those, those are all city, city committees that are predominantly staffed by volunteers, by people who sign up to take part in this great American experience that is local government. And it's, city staff assists with them. Vast majority of those are Inga, by the way.
One thing that we often don't talk, talk about is how our city really could not run without the volunteers that we have on our committees and at all the events that, that we have. We sometimes are challenged to find volunteers because it's, it's extra hours, but we managed to get great, great volunteers and city staff and city council work really well with our volunteers and I can't tell you how appreciative that we are because it takes some commitment to your community to say, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to go to this commu, this, this committee. I'm going to be committed to it. I'm going to attend the meetings. I'm also going to do work for this committee, maybe outside of the committee meeting and, and I'm going to do this because of the love of my community. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that and appreciate that. And that's part of our community recognition dinner is for all of those volunteers that give up their time with loved ones, their evenings, their naps, to do something for, for this, this community. And I would encourage anyone to talk about the positive things that happen when we have a great volunteer force.
Yes. Yeah, we have very excellent volunteers on many of our city committees. Yeah, it's been, it's been a joy and, and many of those people start on a city committee and then they end up sitting up here at some point, so, yeah, yeah. Provide excellent customer service and citizen service. We've talked about that throughout all the slides. Work with pride. We've talked about that at, at a great deal. When it was negative 6,000 last week Wednesday, public works employees were out there, police department employees were out there and they did it. They did it. They did it because that's what they do and awesome. Community involvement, the mayor just hit on that. We have, not only do we have really great involvement from the citizens of the community that represent us on our committees, many of our employees are also in return volunteering for nonprofits, sitting on boards, being involved in, in, in city, other city entities. So it works both ways. Um, so it works both ways. And we continue to find creative and resourceful ways to maximize our resources. Again, can't say enough about, you know, folks like Nick Terramino out in the Public Works Department, uh, you know, doing things uh, that really. Help us out a lot uh, at the bottom line. Back in January or February of twenty eighteen, we kind of established some goals. The council did and staff did. And I kind of wanted to go through each one of those. Uh, implement a ten year street improvement program. We started that program in twenty eighteen and we saw several pictures uh, up here tonight that talked about those various improvements. Catman Street, North Side, Second Lane, uh, Front Street Alleyway, North Gridridge Park. Um, you know, those were done some through budgeted dollars, but also a lot of it through the wheel tax dollars. Uh, without the wheel tax dollars, we would not have been able to accomplish uh, many of those, uh, the vast majority of them. Kickstart the Story Gardens project, uh, that the design work is still underway on that. Um, our uh, the person that's kind of spearheading that, Inga. Decided to have a, a second baby. In twenty eighteen and then Lisa decides to uh, retire. So that kind of slowed the process, but it's, the work is still underway. And actually, Inga just brought it up again um, yesterday morning, right? Did we meet with Sid with yesterday? Yeah.
Yes.
Man, I tell ya. Uh, work with MAC uh, to kind of broaden tourism initiatives. That's on the agenda tonight. Uh, so that, that process is, is underway. Evaluate and streamline the code uh, enforcement procedures and policies. It's a work in progress. That is a moving target. The community's expectations are a moving target. Our ability to respond is a moving target. But we continue to try to make that program uh, as responsive and as resourceful as, as necessary. Continue to work with Milton Fire Department to execute goals, their transitional goals. Uh, the Fire Commission works on that uh, beyond their once a month meetings. And uh, you know, the, the, you know, I, I talk with the Fire Department when I can. We talked about the um, payroll and the processing of AP. Uh, but that, that's just kind of the, the behind the scenes stuff. It's the bigger picture stuff that the Fire Commission and, and three of you that sit up here uh, work on uh, every day. Uh, conduct a wastewater rate study. Uh, the preliminary work has started on that. Upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant and with the more, to move towards more environmentally fro- uh, more environmentally friendly processes. And we did that uh, with the UV upgrades. Update emergency preparedness plan. Howie and his team updated the water and wastewater uh, emergency response, our emergency preparedness plans. Uh, and, and Scott continues to work on the um, uh, Police Department side of things. Revitalize the community house. We did that. Um, you know, there's, we, we always can do more, but um, uh, we did, uh, the Public Works Department did a great job uh, in doing that. And continue to provide quality services to all citizens of Milton. I'd like to think that, you know, we do that, that we do that every day. And the CDA, yes, yes, re, reestablishing the CDA. Did I skip over that? Uh, reorganizing the CDA. They've been a very active and instrumental um, city committee and kind of working towards some of these goals too.
The CDA is like in running with um, our parks and rec and being active. So I just want you guys to know, they're really, really active.
Man. Parks is tough to keep up with.
And that's a citizen committee with one council rep.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And two macreps. It's, it's volunteers, primarily volunteers, yeah.
So twenty nineteen, goals and initiatives from the staff perspective. We want to continue to implement the ten year pavement improvement program. Um, Howie and Mark Langer who's seated in the front row. Uh, are, we're working on developing a, a list that we want to address in twenty nineteen. Uh, we hope to touch a, a lot of streets in twenty nineteen. Um, we're not gonna be able to do kind of the, the reconstruction improvements that we've done in the past, like we did on North Side and Chicago Street and. Catman and, and a lot of those are kind of more, you know, bigger impactful ones because the cost is so high. But we want to get at a lot of streets in twenty nineteen um, in order to kind of get it, get at some of that preventative maintenance. I would like to develop a, a community or an economic development policy, uh, one that can help guide, guide our decisions as we continue to grow. And see uh, demands kind of placed on, on our, on our resources and our limited resources, not only from the TIF perspective, but uh. Uh, in terms of how we, how we grow. Um, so that's something that I personally want to work on this year. Uh, finalize our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Uh, that's been a work in progress for a while. Uh, we went through the ADA um, audit.
That's planned for this spring.
Okay. Update City Hall job descriptions. Things continue to change in all the departments and City Hall is no different. Um, like I said, two years ago, we had uh, one more staff member than we do now. We've had reorganizations and shuffling of, of job duties and Rebecca Anderson coming on this board, this year provided us a. You know, a whole unique set of, of, of opportunities with her skill set. The Public Library wants to update their five year strategic plan. Um, so Ashley and the Library Board will be working on that. Expand the emergency management plan. Uh, the chief, like I said, uh, wants to continue to work uh, on that. Uh, review and update parkland dedication fees. This is something that I think is um, is, is necessary in order to kind of keep pace with development. And make sure that, uh, you know, we're seeing the public improvements that are commensurate with that development. And we're looking to contract out our commercial building inspections. Um, again, as we continue to grow, uh, the demands placed on the limited staff that we have, in fact, the shrinking staff that we have. Um, continues to grow. So we're looking for creative ways to not increase the budget, but, but get work done in a more efficient manner. And potentially contracting out commercial building inspections in twenty nineteen is one of those things that we're gonna evaluate. Oopsies. Twenty nineteen challenges, this is my last slide. Sorry for being so long winded. Debt service. Anybody who's seen my presentations in the past, whether they're here at Budget Time or wherever, um, when I'm doing my traveling road show. Uh, debt service continues to be a challenge for the city of Milton and, and will be for a number of years. Twenty five cents of every dollar collected in taxes goes to debt service and that number does not drop precipitously for a number of years. However, um, we have aggressively paid down our debt, uh, our overall debt um, load. Um, talked about a, a couple of times when I came here in twenty fourteen, our debt ratio was at eighty two percent. And we're down to fifty seven percent now. Um, so that's just in four years, we've been able to drop that down to a much more manageable level. Uh, but it's not without aggressive repayment and uh, and, and the challenges that it continues to present to us. Responsible growth. That is a, a new bullet point that um, I've added this year. We're growing at a, at potentially an unprecedented level. And we want to make sure that we are growing in a responsible manner. And, and I can tell you, um, you know, from my own perspective and, and the American can kind of echo these comments. I'm approached, I would say, I wouldn't necessarily say on a daily basis, but I would say almost on a every other day basis by somebody who's looking to do something in Milton. The substantiveness of those, of those inquiries often sometimes can vary from kicking the tires to leveraging another community to actually building a building. But it's every day. Uh, I mean, it's almost every day. And, and that, that ranges from commercial development to industrial development, to warehouses, to office space, to single family, to multifamily. And it's gonna be, continue to be a challenge for us to grow in a responsible manner. And what I mean when I say that is I don't want to get too far off course here, but there is a tipping point to all things in life. Everything has a tipping point. And at some point, we will, we will start to broach that tipping point in terms of the amount of growth that we have in our ability to respond to the services. Respond with the services necessary to accommodate that growth. It is a very nebulous concept and one that is incredibly subjective and many people have different opinions about it. And if we asked a hundred people, we'd probably come back with a hundred different opinions. And there's no exact science to us, no exact science to it. But it is something that we need to remain mindful of. As we continue to build streets, that's one more street that we have to plow. As we continue to build houses, that's one more house that we may need to respond to a fire call at or a police call at. As we continue to build uh, buildings out in the industrial park, that's one more job, meaning one more house that may be necessary. Um, and, and you know, it, the list goes on and on and on. We are able to accommodate those things. Right now, we absolutely are and we will be for the foreseeable future. But someday that will change and we need to be mindful of that early on in the process before it's too late. Because once you've gone too far, it becomes way more difficult to kind of go back and backtrack. And we are in incredibly robust economy in specifically in this region. And we are great benefactors of that. Our growth is outpacing all of our neighbors. Um, but sometime that will change. That will change either at the local level or that will change at the state level or that will change at the national level. And you know, we'll need to respond to that. When it came in twenty fourteen, um, we hadn't built a house in like six years. You know, we've built, you know, forty houses in the last two years. I mean, it'll, the pendulum will swing back. Uh, but we need to make sure that we're mindful of these things as, 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 as the economy kind of marches on. Maintaining service level with declining funding, that is a challenge that again, will also not go away. I talked at great length at the, uh, around the Budget Time. Uh, despite the fact that we had forty four million dollars worth of new growth, that only resulted in our ability to increase our tax levy by fifty three thousand dollars. Fifty three thousand dollars may sound like a lot, but electricity, healthcare. Um, and contractual obligations increased a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. Those are things we have absolutely no control over whatsoever. Just simply by flipping the calendar from Ja- from December to January, those costs are there. Um, and our ability to meet those costs, to increase our revenues, to, to meet those increases in expenditures that we have no control over continues to be diminished. Um, and I don't see that, that changing anytime soon. Uh, so that's a challenge that everybody faces in Rock County. Everybody faces in Wisconsin and my guess is everybody probably faces it in the nation. But um, it's just, it's a challenge that, that we're gonna continue to face. Uh, balancing service delivery with priorities versus incidents. Um, Howie talked about, um, you know, it, it is uncommon and I, and I agree with him. It is uncommon to get um, citizen complaints that, that um, you know, that, that warrant, you know, some sort of financial response or, or, or physical response. Um, th- those are uncommon. Um, but we're gonna have to continue to balance service delivery versus um, you know, requests for services that may be above and beyond. Or that may be unfortunately outdated. Um, and that's, that's a challenge. Uh, we want to try to continue to increase the tax base, but also couple that with bullet point number two. We want to do that in a responsible manner. And that ultimately ends with the last bullet point, maintaining and preserving the Milton way of life. Um, one of the things that we heard through the comprehensive plan process in twenty fifteen is that people love Milton because of its small town feel. It has big city amenities very close to us, whether that be through Janesville or Madison or Milwaukee or very accessible through Milton. But we want to continue to maintain our identity. And that will continue to be a challenge in many, many ways, in many ways. As, as, as our budgets continue to shrink, as communities continue to grow, as our community continues to grow, um, we want to be mindful of that. And uh, and I believe personally, this group up here does a great job of keeping that top of mind in many of the, many of the conversations I have with them. Either one on one or right up here uh, on Tuesday nights. So that concludes my presentation for twenty eighteen. Uh, just closing comment, twenty eighteen, awesome year, really was. And I think so, I, I mean, I, I don't want to be like an Oscar speech, but there's so many people I want to thank. But there really is, there's so many people, yeah. We have an aw- we really do have an awesome staff and we really do have an awesome community. There is really an incredible amount of people out there who are willing um, to step up and do good things with us. I don't, you know, I don't want to say for us, they do it with us and, and, and they really do it. And, and um, I am beyond fortunate to, to work here, to live here and, and to work with these folks. Um, I mean, even Mark Langer. But it's great. It's, it's great. I'm, I'm very fortunate and I'm very thankful every day.
Because I had some time to decompress last week and not play in negative fifty degree weather. Um, one of the books I read, um, I think kind of summarizes that when you look at everything from the detail to the. To the minutia that we do to these longer term goals focused but not finished.
Yeah, that's great.
And one other thing, we doubled our interest earnings this year. We went from sixty thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand. Somehow that got omitted on these slides.
Dan was gone last week. Well, all of us, well, all of us were.
It was only sixty where I was.
Only sixty, so it was only a hundred and twenty degree difference, yeah. But Dan is right, he did, he did share that bullet point with me before he left and I omitted it in the presentation. Uh, but that, stuff like that, that's, that's where Dan Nelson's expertise comes into play. Um, he has found creative ways to invest our dollars, both in a short term and a long term basis. Um, that brings back substantive um, benefits to the community. And that's a, a credit to his diligence in it. Sometimes he starts talking and I think, he'll be done pretty soon. And I say, sounds good, Dan. And those are the kind of.
Focus but not finish.
So that's all I have. Any other, Scott, Ashley, Howie, Mark, anything, Schrader?
No, no.
It's not team building.
We, we expect you all to stay for team building. If you're here this long, you're, you're stuck with it. Anybody else have any comments or anything that they would like to say before we move on?
I would just like to say thank you to all of the city staff for all of their due diligence in twenty eighteen and bringing the city to the successful place that it is now.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I was just, I agree with what Linda just said.
Okay. Uh, I just want to thank you all for that presentation and the detail in it. And there, you know, um, there's probably things that we maybe didn't put on there or missed out. But it's a pretty thorough presentation and it gives you a really good view of how solid um, the city is. And what a strong foundation we have. And it takes a lot of work and a lot of people working together. And so um, we're pretty proud and, and the, the citizens of Milton should be proud of their community too. Okay. Here we go to more exciting stuff. Discussion and possible action on an agreement with the Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau regarding the creation of a joint tourism and marketing consortium.
So uh, this is a, an agreement that has been drafted over several months, I would say. Uh, between the city of Milton, the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce, the Milton School District and the Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau. Um, several, several months ago, I can't even remember when um, Danny and I approached the Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau. As we continued to kick around this concept of tourism. What is tourism? How do we measure success in tourism? What's the most effective way to market the community? Um, you know, one of the things that we continued to come uh, run into the brick wall was, you know, it's really hard for us in our positions to, to effectively execute those things. And measure their successes. The Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau has been doing this for a long, long time. So we talked to Christine Rebaute, who's the executive director about this concept of maybe they could um. Augment the, some of their marketing efforts to include the city of Milton and um, Christine went to her board and uh, they were on, they were on board. Um, so we developed, uh, she developed that draft marketing plan that is attached within our, uh, within the council packet. Um, we brought that uh, back to the respective entities, the Chamber, the School District and the city. Uh, specifically the city, we took it to the Tourism Committee, the existing Tourism Committee, uh, and presented that to them. And they uh, poured that on uh, with the unanimous recommendation to move forward with this approach. And really what it comes down to, in my opinion, is, is leveraging dollars and capitalizing on expertise. There's a lot of things that we do well and there are a lot of things that we just do. Um, Inga is incredibly talented and we have an incredibly active uh, tourism committee. But it is very difficult to know what we don't know. And um, I know Danny can echo those comments as well. But the JACVB, this is what they do. They are experts in this. They are marketers, they are tourism um, entity. Um, and we were fortunate to have a relationship already established with Christine through many walks of life. Um, and pitched this idea to her and, and, and she was on board. So we drafted this, this agreement. At this time, it is a one year agreement. Um, all three entities are, are equal partners within this in terms of both dollar allocation as well as um, volunteer uh, kind of committee members. Uh, we will kind of recreate the Tourism Committee to consist of three members from, appointed from the School District, three members appointed from the Chamber and three members appointed from the city. Each entity will, will kick in five thousand dollars. Uh, and, and uh, this is, is an, is an annual contract. I hope that this is an annual contract that goes on for many years because it is shown to be successful. Uh, but at this point, we're, you know, we're just starting off with one year. Um, and then um, kind of regrouping at the end of the year to see if we want to challenge, uh, continue it on. It's very likely, why I shouldn't say that, it's equally as likely that the JACVB may come to us and say, you know what, this does, this didn't work the way we wanted it to. Um, we're gonna either need to re, rehash this agreement or, or, you know, thanks, but no thanks. I hope that's not the case. I hope at the end of the day, all four entities feel like this has been a success. Uh, but this is year one and, and we're, we're hopeful that we can um, you know. But this is year one, and we're hopeful that we can, you know, make this kind of a standing thing. Again, to capitalize on their expertise, and to really make sure that our dollars are being spent wisely, in ways that have kind of tried-and-true measures that are proven by experts in the field, as opposed to, you know, guys who are city managers and play guitar and stuff like that, you know, so.
You know, the City has always, ever since I've been elected to the council, looked at ways to have shared partnerships and shared agreements with other entities. You know, it can be as small as purchasing salt with Rock County, or our shared services agreement with the Town of Milton, which has, you know, we've had that partnership for years and years and years. So the City has always had this philosophy of looking at ways to increase our partnerships and collaborations. And actually, the Ice Age Trail is a collaboration with the Ice Age Trail community and the City of Milton. So, and there's.
Tree City.
And Tree City USA. And there's literally hundreds of ways that staff in different departments collaborate with other entities. So this is another way that we're looking at leveraging resources and talents. We hope it works well. It's a new idea. It's also something that across the state of Wisconsin, being, participating in the League of Municipalities Board and their trainings, that all communities are looking to do, is to share more services and programming, because it just makes sense to do it. I think it's a responsible thing to do for our citizens. And you know what? If in October of next year, whoever is mayor, or whoever's on city council, they'll look at it, and they'll say, is this in the best interest of the citizens of Milton? And if there's changes that need to be made, they will, they'll make those changes. If it looks like it's not a win-win for all of our partners, then I trust whoever is in these seats and next year will make the right decision. So I know there's sometimes concerns of, you know, well, what about this partner? You know, do we really want to do this? But we have to have faith in our elected officials. And my experience has been whoever I have worked with always has the best interests of the city residents in mind. So please have some faith in our ability to try new things and leverage these resources, and we'll see where it goes. And these meetings, they're not going to be secret. It's not any conspiracy. If you have ideas, I mean, watch what they're doing. And if you're, if you have ideas or you don't like what they're doing, bring it up and say, well, how come you're doing this, and why aren't you doing that? And how is this benefiting me as a citizen of Milton? You are always welcome, at any committee meeting, to share your ideas and your concerns, and to present problems that maybe the committee members aren't aware of. So please, I encourage everybody to take it seriously, your responsibility of being a citizen of a community. So that's all I have to say on that. And the council will ultimately make the decision whether we're going to do this agreement or not.
I was going to say, when I was at the League of Municipality Conference last year, one thing that was talked about in the small communities discussion area was about partnerships. And there's a lot of talk between a lot of the smaller municipalities that partnerships seem to be kind of the way of the future. It's a way to help leverage your resources a lot better than currently is being done. And with Al's potential, there's always potential in the future of our resources diminishing in some sense that we have a lot more expenses than income, that it's good to think ahead before that happens, and maybe find partnerships that help better use your money, or save money.
Right. I'm going to just, I agree with everything that you had to say with that. I also, at the league, spoke with a lot of people that are, we're all in the same boat. The state makes cuts that we can't control. And the people that are working in collaboration with these other communities and these other groups, they all have success stories. I did want to point out that the committee, our current tourism committee, has done an awesome job with what we have had to work with. There's been all kinds of different advertisements out there, from web commercials, print. And it's been business owners that have shared their marketing expertise. It's been the Chamber Director, of course. It's been historical preservation. And everybody has really had their heart in it, and they've done an excellent job. I have to say, I'm a little disappointed that we're not going to have that group meeting monthly like we did, but everybody on the committee recognizes that we need to progress, and we need to do more, and we need to utilize what our neighbors have, so that we can all be in a better place.
I know Danny and Cory said that they would still meet you on Thursday mornings.
Maybe the police department will.
I move that we.
New Year's resolution.
I move that we accept the agreement between, oh, let's see if I get all these acronyms correct, the JACVB, the MAC, and the Milton School District, to form a community tourism and marketing consortium.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or questions?
Just one other comment. If you think about it, when people come to an area, they don't just come to one particular city. If they're tourists, they're coming to the geographic area. And so marketing a geographic area makes sense to me. If you're trying to drive business here, if you're trying to drive visitors here, this just makes sense in a broader picture, so.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. You're not leaving, Cory. There's team building. I see you're sipping your coat off. Discussion on possible action regarding ordinance number 453, rezoning land within Crossroads Business Park from M2 to B2.
So at the Plan Commission level, there was a public hearing held for this rezoning. This rezoning really addresses three larger tracts of land that are out in the Crossroads Business Park. These three tracts of land are what I refer to as being inside of the loop or west of the bypass. Our long-range plans, and our conference plan, and our long-range land use plan call for development that occurs within these parcels to be in commercial by nature. Right now, their zoning classification is M2, which would be incongruent with our comprehensive plan. My guess is they were M2 back in the day when Highway 26 ran through town, and then when Highway 26 moved out there, these parcels remained in their original zoning classification. And then as new parcels were annexed in that joined these, they were annexed in incongruence with the comprehensive plan, making them B2, and these kind of were left alone. The Midwest Tennis Facility has come forth and expressed interest in one of these parcels. So that kind of prompted this proactive change. But we wanted to address all the land within that inner loop to make sure that it was all appropriately zoned for the types of development that we anticipate will occur within these respective parcels. One question that I got, and it also came up at the Plan Commission level, is why, if you look at the map, why Site Number Two? Isn't that a large stormwater facility? And the answer is yes, it is, and it will remain a large stormwater facility. But the idea is we want to have all the land use, or all the zoning classifications to be congruent, one, with the comprehensive plan, but, two, be congruent with their surrounding land uses. In the unforeseen circumstances in which Midwest Tennis Facility constructs their site, and five years down the road finds out that they want to add two more courts, and they need 10 feet from us from that parcel, we don't want to have to go through a rezoning process again for a 10-foot strip of land. So that's why we wanted to address Site Two. But Site One on the map is the site that's been kind of picked out by Midwest Tennis Facility. And then Site Three has long been kind of classified as the hotel site. But we've had a lot of interest expressed in that site in a lot of different uses other than hotel, but all of them have been commercial in nature. All of the land along Commerce Way is already zoned commercial. Obviously, QuickTrip is zoned commercial. The Outlet in front of QuickTrip is zoned commercial. And if we were to, in the fortunate opportunity to annex in additional land in that area, it would likely be zoned commercial as well. So this is somewhat of a housekeeping matter, but also in response to development. The Plan Commission voted unanimously, I'm sorry, to forward a recommendation to the council to adopt ordinance 453, rezoning the subject sites to B2.
Were there any other questions from the Plan Commission?
No. And no one spoke during the public hearing. Bill was here, but he didn't speak.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the change of zoning.
So it would be to adopt ordinance.
453.
Approve the ordinance. Yeah. And then if you wanted to waive the second and third reading and move to adopt, you can.
All right. I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion on possible action on ordinance number 454, regarding the conversion of a portion of McEwen Lane to One Way.
We were approached by the Milton School District with this request to convert a portion of McEwen Lane to One Way in response to the changes in use at Small Wonders Learning Center. As you may be aware, 4K, all 4K for the Milton School District, all 4K programming for the Milton School District has moved to Small Wonders, which means that there is a larger amount of cars, as well as buses, that kind of move through that area at various times throughout the day. And one of the concerns that was expressed is that with kids kind of coming and going from there more often than there was when it was just a daycare, sightlines and conflict points have increased with potential conflicts with kids and parents walking across that street. The street already is incredibly narrow and makes two-way traffic difficult, if it's possible. Obviously, it has been that way for quite some time. But when buses are in there, and children are moving about, and parents are moving about, it really potentially creates an unsafe environment. So the School District approached us with this request. City Administration, Police Department, Public Works Department agree that this change would hopefully make that situation better. We've contacted the property owners, the other affected property owners, it's really only two property owners, and they are in agreement with this change, or at least not objecting to the change. So as you can see on the map, the map does a really good job, in my opinion, of graphically depicting the change that will occur. It's really only that north-south leg of McEwen that will become One Way and allow for only northbound traffic. So really, the only change for traveling motorists would be if you were on East High Street, and you were wanted to head south in McEwen, you no longer would be able to. Or if you were exiting Chapel Specialties, you would no longer be able to head south on McEwen. All of your traffic movements would need to be north. But based on just anecdotal observations, that's the preponderance of the movements anyways, and that location is generally everybody heads north. So I don't think it will be much of a change for most folks.
I have a question, Al. When people are going to be pulling out of McEwen Lane, I don't believe that that entrance there is wide enough for a left or right turn. So how will that be addressed? Because I'm just thinking that if somebody's making like a left turn, and everybody else wants to go right, we're going to have a backup here.
Which exit are you talking about?
McEwen Lane turning onto High Street? So will, how will that type of a situation be addressed?
I'm not sure.
I don't know that the traffic on High Street is at such a volume that that would cause a queuing problem. People are just going to have to wait their turn, and I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Now, since I live there, I will say that I don't see too much queuing as it is right now.
Yeah. There's no change to the, the left turn has no change to the current traffic pattern.
You're already able to do that.
Well, but my question was, if we just go to One Way, is the drive wide enough so that if you had to, can you put a left turn and a right turn?
Oh. Oh.
If we run into this.
That wouldn't be wide enough for that. Yeah. And they can still, from the parking lot, you can still go to the other McEwen Lane portion and turn both ways also. So you don't have to go out the parking lot to go north. You can still go south out of the parking lot.
Right. I do that twice a day, as do several other parents, where we just turn around inside the lot and exit out the other end, which helps relieve the pressure out the other direction, too, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 454, and waive the second and third readings.
Second.
Any other further questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion on possible action regarding ordinance 457, regulating parking along Gateway Drive.
This was a request that the Milton Police Department received from QuickTrip. What they were experiencing was, although a lot of people probably don't follow this, whether you know it or not, the entrance on Chicago Street is really a truck-only entrance, and it's right-in only. And the traffic pattern that they are attempting to kind of have trucks do is enter from Chicago Street, and then work through their diesel pumps, and then exit onto Gateway. And when cars are parked on both sides of the street, or one side of the street, or both, it makes that turning movement very difficult for semis. And they're having situations in which, I don't know if a car has been hit, but there's been, but there's been some near misses. So they simply asked that parking be restricted, basically, for 100 feet on both sides of the street, near that exit. And you can see on the map that I included in the memo, it doesn't prohibit parking by any means along Gateway, it's just between those two signs. So it probably won't change many of the parking patterns that exist on Gateway. It'll just shift folks either 50 feet one way or 50 feet the other way. But it will make for a more safe environment in that. And then, you know, that probably only becomes even more imperative if Midwest Tennis Facility builds there and more cars are in and around that area. We don't want to have a semi truck stuck halfway in the middle of the street waiting for somebody to move their car or something, so.
I guess I did want to ask, I mean, I'm not opposed to this at all, but this picture obviously was taken on a pretty quiet day. There's usually, or different times of the year, there are tons of cars parked out there on that street. And there have been other complaints about people not being able to safely get out of the other exit to the left of that, because there are cars parked, parallel-parked on both sides of that exit as well. And so people can't see, you know, getting out of there, and cars are parked on the other side of the street, and it's such a narrow street then. And, you know, they're all legally parked, but the ability to see is difficult. And I guess I would, why are all those cars parked there? I mean, where are they coming from?
Yeah, I can't answer that specifically. My best guess is they are working in that area, whether that's at Badger State Maintenance, or one of the tenant spaces that they have, or at QuickTrip themselves. I'm not really sure, but that would be my guess, because they do seem to be parked there all day, nearly every day.
And while it's a concern that people are having to slowly creep out because of visibility, that's a concern, that what's being brought tonight is a little bit different.
Oh, I know that.
And that these semis are just physically unable to make a turn.
Right. No, I agree. I just, like I said, it's just been brought to my attention about the other issue, and yeah, whether or not eventually we'll have to address that exit.
It's possible.
As well.
I think it's possible.
But I know what you're saying. They cannot get out the other.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I mean, I think to answer your question, I haven't received those complaints. those complaints about the other exit. I don't know if you have.
I've, I've, I got one story from a QuickTrip employee that said, hey, since we're talking about this, here's what I, here's what I saw the other day. So, but it's something we'll, we'll keep our eyes on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree. It's something that, and again, traffic's only gonna increase in that area. Um, so, so yeah, as, as traffic patterns change and traffic increases, it's something that it's definitely worth keeping an eye on because at some point, something is gonna develop in front of the QuickTrip as well. Um, we already know Midwest Tennis is gonna go next door to them, so, um, and there's that vacant lot next to Badger State Maintenance. So yeah, it's, it's definitely, it's, it's an odd situation that there are so many cars parked on the street there. And I think it's just one of those situations where people started doing it, then other people did it, and now that's what everybody does, so they just do it. And, um, you know?
On the positive, when I come out of there, I'm more careful.
Yeah.
That's all, I mean, I'm just gonna say. No, I mean, it, it almost forces people to be more careful with all those cars, I mean, in a way.
Teresa just lays on her horn.
And honestly, that goes back to an early conversation we had in this room about parking on both sides of the street, appearance of speed, how that impacts and, and honestly, congestion has a role to play. It slows you down and makes you more careful. Not always, but sometimes that works to our benefit.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance four five seven and waive the second and third reading and adopt.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding an engineering work order for Front Street utility improvements.
So this is, uh, an item that we have talked about, um, kind of tangentially through, for the last couple of months, uh, but now we're starting to bring some proposals forward. Um, Front Street is a, is an, is one of our, our streets that is in, in poorer condition, especially right at that intersection of Front and Madison Avenue. It is in really poor shape. Uh, but additionally, the utilities underneath Front Street are also in poor shape. Um, and this is a large project. It is a very big project and one that we have, um, kind of been mapping out in long-range plans for a while and we feel confident at this point, um, that we should be able to address this in 2019. Um, and this work order specifically is for, um, design engineering services for the improvements along Front Street, not only the pavement improvements, but the underground improvements as well. Uh, so this would be the first step in the process. One question that was asked of me is, is, um, if we're not able to fully fund all of the Front Street improvements in 2019, um, will this money go to waste? And the, the short answer is no. Um, you know, the topography's not gonna change, the, the condition, uh, the depths of, of, of utilities isn't gonna change. So if we, if we can't address these improvements in 2019, uh, this, the, these dollars for engineering and design, uh, will not go to waste. We could, they could be used again in 2020, um, I guess, is, is my point, so. Uh, but it is something that needs to be addressed, um, sooner rather than later. And as we continue to kind of tick off some of the poorer streets in the community, this is one of the, one of the ones that's, that's kind of left on the docket, but it's, it's a big project, so. So this, this is again, just for the design work, if we are to move forward with the actual, uh, work reconstruction of that street and the underground utility repairs and reconstruction, um, that will come back as a separate agenda item, um, probably, I don't know, March or April, so. And if this project is to move forward, if we are able to get creative with funding sources and find ways to, to kind of, uh, augment some of the, some of the higher expenses, um, it would likely be a summer project.
I have one question, uh, regarding, um, is there an impact or potential foreseeable impact on, uh, the property owners directly by the changes that we might make in this, you know, the setup of the street and this sewer and the water?
Is your, is your question, will they see, will, will they see an improvement or, or will they have, will they have noticeable changes to their services?
Yeah, or will they have to make change to their services?
Or will there be disruptions?
Yeah, disruptions.
Well, there certainly will be disruptions i- in, in terms of the, the street will be fully closed. Um, so that, that will be something we'll have to have kind of neighborhood meetings and, and, and work with those businesses. Um, luckily, we did the Front Street Alley in 2018, um, so that made that area better. And luckily, in 2017, we paved a parking lot over in Merchant Row and in 2016, we added a parking lot in Merchant Row. So, you know, some of those decisions maybe seemed crazy at the time, but here we are. Uh, so, um, you know, so we, we, we've been kind of building towards this so we can have, uh, you know, hopefully opportunities for those folks to have, to minimize their disruption. There absolutely will be disruption because this is such a huge project. Um, I mean, it would be even more so than Parkview Drive, uh, was because we're gonna have to really, you know, um, go underground. But, um, you know, we'll do, we'll do whatever we can to help those folks out, so.
Um, and I just wanted to point out also that a lot of those businesses on that street have the entrances on the other side of their building because of the plans from years ago when we were gonna make it more of a circle. So that, so the businesses will have access to it, but I, I believe that this is a project that we really need to, um, that we need to, to look at here. So I will make a motion, um, to accept the work order for Front Street utility improvements.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. And it's unfortunate that sometimes businesses and lives get disrupted and, um, it's not easy on them, we recognize it, um, but these are things that have to be done. We have to maintain our infrastructure. Um, we would be irresponsible and neglectful to our community if we didn't do it. Um, fortunately, it's not going to be years, it's gonna be months. Um, but, uh, if we always push off, uh, maintenance of infrastructure, then it costs more and is more disruptive, um, the longer we put things off, so.
Well, I, I will say that there's actually one business in this area who's been asking us to do this for the last couple of years. I mean, they, they really want this to be done. They understand that, uh, the change, that it'll be disruptive, but they believe that the long-term benefit is far away the short-term inconvenience. Um, again, not speaking for everybody, but there's certainly one business who's been kind of, you know, saying, is this gonna happen this year, is this gonna happen this year kind of thing? And one other small piece of this too, it doesn't change anything in terms of the, the decision that was just made or even that's on here. Um, last week, Mark, uh, I asked Mark to look at potentially, uh, if we were to make that connection that exists in our downtown plan between Front Street and the Merchant Row Parking Lot, what would that look like? So that, that might be a part of this project as well. Um, it, because it's in our downtown plan and, and, and it was kind of put in there in 2015, um, you, and we're doing Front Street, you know, let's just at least take a look at it, um, to see what that cost may be and can we fold that into the project or at least put us in a position to make that connection at some point in the future at a lesser cost, so.
I have a picture of me in nineteen fifty-six. What it looked like. I mean, you do it similar to what it used to be?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. I mean, there are pictures, yeah. Teresa said there, there was a picture of her in nineteen eighty-six.
Nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-six.
What it used to look like and, yeah.
Are you bringing it? You're gonna show us this picture, Teresa, next to you?
No, I was giving him a hard time, but, um, just that I wondered if it would be similar to what it used to be.
Well, it was one of the reasons that when we redid the Merchant Row Parking Lot, we changed traffic within the Merchant Row Parking Lot to be two ways. Previously, it was one way and it made for a really difficult traffic pattern in that parking lot. Once you had committed to either passing the parking lot or going into the parking lot, you had no other alternative but to go all the way back around the block. So making that two-way traffic allowed people different options for ingress and egress out of that parking lot. This connection between Front Street and Ainsley would provide them another outlet or inlet, if depending on if we made it one-way or two-way, um, to access that parking lot. Again, thus, thus decreasing the amount of traffic that is forced into that really awkward intersection there at Front, Vernal and... Twenty fifteen, when that was made part of the plan.
So we'll go on to, um, the next slide because that little part was not exactly on the agenda. But it is very connected to redoing Front Street, so. Uh, discussion and possible action regarding well number four repairs.
Uh, this one was an unanticipated, um, request for some money to do a repair. Um, the existing motor up there is between forty and fifty years old and it started vibrations a lot and became very hot and just wasn't working properly, so we had it checked out. Um, and besides the motor actually needing repair, um, it wasn't pumping water even when it was working as much as it should. So the, so essentially, we were getting like, if you're supposed to pump a thousand gallons a minute, we're only getting eight hundred, just from, that's where the, uh, the, I guess the pump repair part is. There's the motor needs repair and the pump, um, assembly and the pipes and things need to be repaired. So they gave us various options on it, but the, actually, the most long-term efficient option is to replace the, with a new motor and do those pump repairs and the, you know, the, the, just the pump main installation and stuff. So that would be about twenty-two thousand dollars and there could be a possibility of a focus on energy rebate, but you can't guarantee that, so that's why we just put the twenty-two thousand dollar request to get the entire, um, work done.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the replacement of well four and pump set, assembly, uh, for costs up to twenty-two thousand dollars.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Could you just, for the sake of our audience, Dan, could you explain where this funding is gonna come from?
Yeah, so the, both the water sewer and stormwater utilities, this is water, obviously, um, have reserve funds set aside, um, and we try to keep three to eight months worth of, um, operating cash on hand for cash flow purposes. And the water utility is in excess of six months, um, cash on hand, even with, um, some of the slated projects that we have, uh, planned for twenty nineteen. So this would just come from some of that residual cash that is kind of there for these projects that come up unfortunately.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion carries and we'll get a new motor, whatever, right? Water will be pumping. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand nineteen farmland leases.
Annually, we, uh, renew farmland leases. Uh, what these are is there is land that the city owns that is e- either out in our commercial business park, industrial park, or, um, actually over here in Cross Ridge Park, um, that still has usable, uh, utility in terms of farm land, uh, crop harvesting. So we utilize, or we rent out that land, uh, to farmers who are interested in, uh, using, utilizing that land for continuing, uh, for farm purposes. So annually, we, we contact those farmers who have been doing it, uh, some of them for many, many years and, um, see if they're interested. And, um, this year, actually, I think Pierce dropped off, uh, some, some lands that he had previously farmed and Heth picked them up. So, um, that's really the only change from the previous years.
Can approve them as a group? Not singular?
Yeah, we can approve them as a group, can't we, Mark? Yeah.
Yes, you can. If you choose, you can do either one. You can break them out separately or approve them as a group.
I'll move that we approve the attached, uh, farmland leases as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. We're getting through the agenda. All right, general items.
I have some.
Okay.
Couple things. CDA met yesterday and we basically spent a lot of time talking about a residential exterior improvement program that we're looking at, trying to create. And have a meeting again next week and hopefully after that meeting, we can bring it to a council agenda sometime soon, so you can take a look at it. So that's a nice little thing. It's kind of like the, um, commercial, uh, exterior, uh, improvement program we have. We're doing it for residential side of things. Policy ad hoc, um, me on Mon, we will be meeting this Monday and hopefully after that meeting, we'll be able to bring forth, um, our donation policy that we've been working on to, uh, hopefully in our next meeting too. So maybe we'll be seeing some fun stuff at our next city council meeting if these things get, uh, passed in those committees. And then finally, for historic preservation, which we're meeting tomorrow, but I wanted to mention this event we have coming up in March, it's the Herstries of Milton. On March tenth, from ten AM to two PM, tickets are thirty-five dollars. And there's a Facebook event out there and I believe, according to INGA, there'll be a link on the website here shortly. So it'll be a fun little tour of the Herstries of Milton.
Awesome.
Want anything to add, Inga?
Um, just that the, the Historic Preservation Commission is coordinating this event in celebration of Women's History Month.
I was just gonna say.
So the focus will be on, um, different stories of women in the Milton community and women's organizations that have had an impact. And the tour is going to start at INGA and it's going to come back into Milton, hit a couple spots, plan to do a tour of the library and main hall, and then, um, end up back at INGA for lunch.
Which lunch is included in that thirty-five dollars too, by the way.
Sounds like a great time. Anybody else have general items or committee reports?
Um, I, I have both if you want me to do the committee report. Um, first of all, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Milton Optimist Club is having their play this weekend up at the high school. It's Keepers of the Tales. Um, the Optimist Club is a virtual club, so to get your times, um, please look on their Facebook page. But I did want to just remind everybody that that's going on, excuse me, with the Optimist Club. Um, I've already mentioned that the, uh, group that I have been working with for the Tourism Committee has done an incredible job and I just want to extend many, many thanks to them and their expertise and the way that they have helped us promote the city. Um, we had our fire commission meeting. Um, due to the weather, we didn't, were not able to, to meet the candidates for the fire chief, but we'll, we'll find that out as soon as they reschedule that. Um, I did just want to kind of run through a little bit of the information. We had some people that were questioning about the amount of vehicles that go out whenever there are, um, incidents. And, um, I just want to remind everybody that we have to look out for our firefighters and EMTs also, and so the vehicles that go out, it, it might seem to you that it might be a little bit excessive, but those vehicles are there for the protection of our firefighters just as well. Um, and then there was a little bit of a, a change in the battalion positions and, uh, our next meeting is the third, the third Wednesday this month, and that meeting will be at the town hall. And at that time, hopefully, we'll be looking at the plans that Chief Banker has given to the committee. I still want to encourage people to get ahold of the commission if you have concerns or questions.
Anything about what happened on February first?
Oh. Go ahead.
Start the paramedic program.
No, you have to come to the podium, Jenny. Come on. This is a great announcement.
It is.
This is something that, um, the staff have been working on. We, I mean, I, I mean, we talked about this for years.
Uh-huh.
And, um, you know, it's, it's something that is such a great service to our community and we're so happy that we were, um, along with the, um, support of the Firefighters Association and, um, also some, uh, law changes at the state level, um, that made this easier too. So there, you know, we are really excited to have this. And I don't know, Jenny, if you want to make any other comments because, um, it's, it's really a big deal. It, it will save lives.
Yeah, big step.
Anybody else for staff or general items, or I mean, committee reports or general items? Um, okay, staff, we'll start with Howie. Anything other than what we've talked about? We've talked a lot tonight.
Um, no, nothing, well, they're just, now we're just working on capital projects and...
Some snowplows out there.
Yeah, they salted.
Something going on tonight?
They salted, just a little. So, um, and everything actually went pretty good for the cold weather last week, so.
I'm not even a... I'm not even going to say what did or did not happen because I'm just, I'm not going to talk about anything anymore because I don't want to jinx it.
It was just...
It's a really ugly... Dan, anything?
Nope.
Chief?
I was going to say no, but Linda's comments now sparked something in me. That's the second time I've heard today about number of vehicles responding to emergency calls. I had that brought up by somebody else today, too. There's a, there's a, an emergency management phrase that says, "Order big, order early." Because if you have enough ability to handle an emergency, you can always turn people around. But if you don't get enough there, now you're playing catch-up. So I would encourage the people that are raising that concern to speak to those of us who do the work, and we can explain that to them and kind of what the logic is about that, because it's important.
I just wanted to mention that Parks and Recreation Commission, they're looking at some options for additional playground equipment at Water Tower Park, which is up on Rogers Street near the Red Hawk subdivision area. And then also looking at adding bike racks to a couple parks because they noted that we're lacking those in a lot of those facilities, so we want to add those in.
Al?
I will say, I think I mentioned this earlier before, that the city of Milton is the lowest taxed city in Rock County. And one of the important aspects of that is because we have this very incredibly unique situation with our fire department. It's very unique. And it's very, it, there is not a lower-cost way of doing what we do than what we currently have. And that has its downfalls as well. So if you are concerned about the number of vehicles that are responding to an emergency, the other alternative would be to send less. I'm assuming the reason you're complaining about that is because you believe that people, so many people there, it's costing you money. It's costing me money to have those three vehicles there. We're the lowest taxed city in Rock County. That's all.
You know, and the staff, the fire department, and police department, that's one of the primary things a municipality does, is provide for safety for their residents. And they work hard. And if I'm in a car accident, I don't want them playing catch-up. If I'm having a heart attack, God knows, it could happen any day. I want paramedics-level service. Maybe not everybody would want that for me, but I want it. So I just want to compliment them. You know, we've said a lot of nice things, but that is one of the primary things that we do as a municipality, is provide safety services, so. And, you know, the fire commission is going to continue to work on those transition goals and look at what's working, what's not working, and we look forward to that. We look forward to participating in choosing a new fire chief and looking at that shared services agreement that we have with Janesville also. So I just want to thank everybody for everything that they do.
Did we forget Ashley? Sorry.
Yes, yes. Ashley.
She's bleeding her chair down.
She's like, oh, she's sipping, she's sipping her tea. I've forgotten that all before, so it's just the club.
We're just posting for our open position pretty soon. Hopefully, we'll get that fulfilled in a month or so, so we can have full staff.
I put a request in a little bit of humor tonight. We need some humor every night, right?
We do, for sure.
At council. I'd like to have a couple wheelchair racks put in at the parks, a place where I could park my wheelchair. So just a thought, something to think about.
Okay, I'll mention it. Okay. We've been together a long time, haven't we? Okay, all right. So this is really easy-peasy team building. Yes or no, did you watch the Super Bowl? You don't have to defend your decision whether you watched it or you didn't. Do you have a favorite commercial?
No, and what's a commercial?
Write down your names. You're right.
It was on, but that day, Grant did not take a nap. So he was difficult. So I don't remember any commercials. I saw the halftime show, which I thought was bizarre, and, yeah, so I guess the game was on, and unfortunately, the Patriots won. Cheaters.
Actually, I do want to add to mine. I didn't watch it. You know, I like to watch football. My wife, who doesn't like watching football, she watched it because she was away with her friends.
Who's next? Mine was on, but I was listening and doing other things around my house at the same time. But the commercial that I did catch that I really liked was the one with all the players at the dinner. I just laughed for that whole thing. It was great. Of course, I have two boys, so just kind of brought back some memories.
Ashley, get on right now.
So I watched every boring, underwhelming minute of the game. I did not want the Patriots to win, but they did. I really enjoyed Peyton Manning's commercial at the very beginning, and then the 100-year banquet with the NFL players.
We didn't hardly, we had it on, but we barely watched it. But I enjoyed watching my wife watch the halftime show.
We only turned it on for the halftime show, and then we regretted it, so.
The game, and then I'm trying to think if it was the Pepsi commercial or something It was a neat commercial that went on for a while that... I'm trying to think of who was in it, anyway.
There was a great commercial that Teresa does now remember.
I've always believed that a great offense is enhanced by a tremendous defense. So yes, I watched the game, and I got criticized by a lot of my offensive-oriented friends, but I thought it was a pretty good defensive battle, so that was my take. And I didn't have a real favorite commercial, so.
Well, I had it on. I don't really, the commercials, the Bud Light one was kind of in the Game of Thrones twist, it was kind of cool. But, yeah, yeah.
I had it on, but I don't remember any of the commercials. But I did hear that there was a 30-minute Skittles Broadway musical live performance making a mockery of the over-commercialization of things that afternoon in New York City.
Oh, really?
It was a one-time performance put on by Skittles.
I watched the game, and my favorite commercial would be the Michael Bubba commercial.
Watched the whole thing. I liked the Stella one with the dude and the movie people where they changed that.
That was good.
And then, and I liked the best local one was the Senex one where the dad was, with the word that made the little girl laugh, he was pulling the oil stick out. And when he said dipstick, she just bust up laughing. And he could not make her quit laughing every time he said it, and she would just laugh.
I watched, I watched all of it painfully. And I thought the Amazon commercial was really funny with ordering all the dog food. And since all my kids have Alexa or whatever and nanny cams and stuff, so I thought it was really cute. So Mark, we're out to the audience. Phil? Lauren?
Didn't watch any, good thing, huh?
Jenny? Dan?
I thought it was a good game. I wasn't bored of it.
All right, did we get everybody? Wow, thank you. Until, you know, the next Super Bowl game. So, next meeting, next meeting, February 19th, 2019, 6:00 p.m. I will be returning from Mexico, going to leave for Mexico for a few days. So Teresa's in charge, of course, so try not to get us in too much trouble. No, 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 I'll be at the meeting. I'll just be returning, but, you know, you can blame everything on Teresa for four days. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we're starting in New York, New York, different. There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for staying for the meeting.